I think they're like creative and stuff.
We're waiting for the stream of the map. We're waiting for the screen of the map. We lost the screen. Yeah, that'd be good.
The very one told me.
Yeah, probably. No.
We have some robots. So we have two different colors. We have silver and gold.
He doesn't. Is that bigger? This is. Oh, wow, that's bigger.
Artist model.
It's heavy. It's pretty heavy. The magnet on the back is. I'm not in the mood to wear it. That helps to judge somebody's age by what.
Members of the board would please come back? You good?
Maybe, maybe.
I want one of those things. Do you see the thing? Is there a thing? Yeah, no, I just need something for my. Oh. You can't see me anymore.
All right, board members, if I could get you back, please. All right, welcome back. We are back, ready to carry on.
Maybe, almost.
Thank you.
It was almost up?
All right, we will continue on. With our consensus items. Yes, we're at consensus items. Do we need anything pulled off there, or can we?
I make a motion that we approve the consensus items.
That we have a motion to approve the consensus items. Thank you, Ms. Crable. Second, Ms. Walker, thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bradford?
I would ask to pull four items off.
Four items off, okay.
Would you like me to tell you what they are?
Yes, say, yes, you would, please.
Letter C, the MOU, Western Carolina, and letter D, Career Coaches, MOU, Cape Fear Community College. I just have one question. Letter. Letter H, Learning Perspective, for discussion. Letter I, MOU Black Ben for questions. One or two questions there. And. That's it.
Would you say those again, please?
Yes. Letter C, the MOU, Western Carolina.
C, D.
C, D, H, and I.
H and I, okay.
So I will make a follow-up motion to approve the items that were not pulled.
Okay, so everything except for C, D, H, and I. We have a motion to approve. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? They all pass. We'll start with C, Western Carolina.
We can actually combine C and D. My question was on the. The universities. Looking at the sex offender registry only on an annual basis. And I sent an email to Dr. Faust for Dr. Barnes, and I didn't hear back from Dr. Barnes, but I did hear back from Dr. Faust. But I still have the question. If, if, if the school places a student teacher into our school system and halfway through their period, they have a sex offense documented against them, we don't find out because it's a year-long period. Is this a template that we use for everyone, or they all the same? And has anybody ever suggested that we shorten that period, that window up?
Dr. Barnes?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. We do use the standard template for all universities and have sort of modeled that after what most universities do. One of the things that we do is we connect very closely with the partners that we're working with. So we had an incident last year where something had happened with a student teacher. We found out about it the next day. It's, it's usually a part of that communication that they will call us if anything happens with one of their students. And then we address it thereby through that way.
Are there questions on that?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. That was C and D. You said we could put together?
Yeah, those two. It was the same. It was the same question on both, and it looked to me like it was a template. Letter H, the Learning Perspectives. Is that something that someone is going to explain? Because we were under contract to spend just right around $300,000 for the contract, and then they put in a change order for 700 and some thousand dollars to take the total to just under a million dollars. That's a pretty big deal. I'd like to understand why we're going to spend that money and what it's going to go to, please.
Ms. Barnum?
Yes. Can you hear me? Not really. It doesn't sound, anyway, okay. So that question was posed earlier today as well, and Dr. Faust, I believe, sent a message back to the board. But the LPI Contract, Learning Perspectives Contract, was initially written for. $200,000 and some change. I don't have this one right here. I have the reason. So in the, oh, there we go. And it was only written with that dollar amount because all of our federal funds had not dropped and had not been released to us. So we knew we were going to be spending more in that contract, but we didn't commit until the rest of our federal funds were released to us. In the past, so last year, our contract with Learning Perspectives was more than $800,000. And so we knew, especially post-COVID, that we would have a greater need. We just weren't sure exactly how much. So it has actually gone up from 828,000 to 999,000. So not from 200 and some thousand to 999,000. And specifically, those services are for paraeducators that are specifically trained to work with our students with significant behavioral and emotional disabilities within our population of students with disabilities.
So the increase from the eight to the 998 is, gets us what? Is that just cost of living?
No, that's actually an increase in the number of contracted staff we are using. So we are using 35 contracted staff this year, which is an increase over last year. So the rate did not really increase for us.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, aye?
Josie, you want to take this?
Yes, I asked a clarifying question about this because in letter F, it talked about trainings. And so I was just concerned, it seemed like this was a pretty form letter. So when we have organizations coming into our schools, what trainings are they providing our teachers? And kind of the feedback has been given that that's kind of a more generalized form. That might be a meeting with the staff, an update of what's going on, not necessarily a training per se. I just, I know how much your staff is going through and to add on different trainings that they have to sit through and undergo with an outside organization. It just concerned me, so I just.
So what letter are, so we.
We're talking about aye?
Aye, and then if you look in.
No, I mean, in the, in the MOU.
If you look at letter F in the MOU.
Under obligations for NHCS or obligations for the other?
Let me click on it.
I think it's 3F, provide an orientation, ongoing need to train for staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Someone give us some more clarification on that?
I can, sir.
Oh, thank you, sir.
There's not a set-up program or amount of training. It would just be in there in case they wanted to do something with the staff. And we would always sort of dialogue with principals and staff and approve that before it happened.
More discussion? I thought I would entertain a motion to.
Now, a motion I already made to approve them all.
Okay, I thought you amended that, so.
I did, but we voted to the amendment, and now we have to vote for the original one on the table.
Okay. Okay, seconded it. So all in favor of approving the consensus items as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's a seven zero. We'll carry on with policy amendments. Ms. Crable, you want to take this?
Yeah, so the I will make a motion to approve the policy consensus items as presented.
Okay, we have 2,400, 3,300, 3,430, 3,610, 4240, 4,400, and 4,720. Any discussion? Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to actually send policy 3,430, 3,610, and 4,720 back to policy.
You don't make a motion, you pull them off.
I would put, you pull them off. 3,430, 3,610, and 4,720. Oh, 3,300, excuse me.
3,300.
3,300. I apologize.
And 3,610?
Yes, ma'am, and 4,720.
Okay. We have a motion to, to take 3,430, 4,720, 3,300, 3,610, is that correct? And send them back to policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Bradford? All in favor? Is there any discussion?
All right, I'm, I'm clear. I need to make point order. I made a motion to accept the policies as presented. So the next motion was to, we're pulling them, pulling these out.
Right.
So we can vote on passing the policy consensus for the items that have not been pulled out.
Okay.
I don't, did you get a second?
Yeah, I thought somebody could second me.
Did someone second?
Okay, nobody seconded me. We need a second.
Need a second for approving those policies?
2,400, 3,430, 4240, and 4,400. The ones that were not pulled.
We have a second? I'll second it.
And so now we discuss.
So now, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I didn't hear 3,300. Did you say?
She said it.
She did.
But you're, you're pulling that one.
She's pulling 3,300, 3,610, and 4,720.
Okay, thank you, because I was going to pull that for discussion.
3,430.
But if you're sending that back to policy or its beings.
We're going to do that motion next. We have to vote on this motion.
Okay.
So our motion right now is for the remaining policies, except for 3,430, 4,720, 3,300, and 40, excuse me, 3,610. We have a first and a second. All in favor of passing those other policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven zero. Now we have a second motion on the table to pull 4,330, 4,720, 3,300, and 3,610. Send it back to policy. We have a first and a second on that.
3,430 was not on that list.
It was, it was, she misspoke.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
Okay, so we have those. Is there any discussion about that?
Looking over the language, I found that some inconsistencies referencing NCDPI, and I'd like to streamline that process in one of the policies. Also, there's been a lot of concern with surveying our students, since I'd like to have further discussion. And I, I know if we continue this discussion here on the dais, we're going to be here much longer than what we want for the five-minute time. So with, with respect to everybody's time, I believe that we can open it to discussion and have greater detailed and greater conversation in policy.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
I agree with that, but either way, when it comes here, we will be having discussion anyway. I take your point because we don't want to be here very late. I feel like 3,300, if you're sending it back to policy, I mean, it's going to get back to us eventually, and we're going to have discussion. Since we don't know who's going to be on Policy Committee yet, I guess, if we are interested in those policies, then we will attend the meeting, correct? Does that sound?
There's not a scheduled policy meeting until January.
Oh, I thought you said there was.
We, well, the one next week, we're not going to be here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, and I'm sorry, I've missed one. So we are discussing 4,720, 3,300, 3,610, and.
That's all.
That's it. Okay, that's right. Okay. I had, I had an extra one. So we do have a motion, and do we have a second? Do we have a second to put them back in policy?
I will second. I thought Pat did, but I'll second.
I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Bradford did. Okay, all in favor of sending 4,720, 3,300, and 3,610 back to policy for further discussion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes seven zero. Policy for second reading. We'll carry on quickly to A.
Ms. Willathor?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Ms. Crable.
I just want to remind the, the new board members, or inform them, that policies for second reading are only necessary for new policies. And we do not have to go through first and second reading for policy amendments, and that's why we have the policy consensus item, because those were all amendments to existing policies. So I just wanted that to be a point of clarification. And 3,460 is not technically a policy. It's a regulation, but it's a regulation tied to policy 3,460. But it is still new.
Okay, so that is policy for second reading. Do we have a motion to accept the 3,460R, reduce elective credit?
I make a motion to accept policy 3,460R as presented.
Second.
We have a second for Ms. Mason. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, let's, let's vote. All in favor of accepting policy 3,460R as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Again, seven zero. Carrying on, Calendar Committee update. Dr. Faeson, I believe you're going to be helping us with this, please.
So the Calendar Committee was charged to bring the board two calendars. The committee met, and during that time, the committee selected, there were three calendars, but the committee selected two calendars to bring to the board. That is Draft A and Draft B. Draft A is a traditional calendar. Draft B is a calendar that defies school calendar law. Both calendars have the instructional amount of hours of 10:50. There is a three-day difference in the semester for Calendar A. And for Calendar B, there is a nine-day difference. School would start for students on the 14th. Again, this does not match calendar law. And school would end for students on the 24th. This is what the committee asked that I bring to the board. As the board has reminded me, I am just facilitating the committee. So the committee asked questions, realized that they would be asking the board to defy calendar law, but insisted that these were the two calendars that I bring to the board. So I need for us to vote and approve a calendar because right now we're at a standstill for our other calendars and our school calendar. Right now, we do not have a calendar for 2324.
It's the will of the board. Ms. Crable?
I just wanted to point out also that not for Calendar Draft B, we are non-compliant not only for the day that we start, but for the number of consecutive days that teachers must have off. In Draft A, where there are 44 days from the last teacher workday until the first teacher, last teacher workday of 2022, 2023, to the new calendar, 2324. And in Draft B, there are only 38 days, and 42 is the required. From last work, last day that a teacher is expected to report to the first day a teacher is expected to report. So we have two different, two different discrepancies in the calendar.
I haven't, I have not seen that law, but I'm trying to understand what you're saying. I haven't seen, that's not a law that I have seen, Jason. But I guess my question is, are you saying? Okay, so my, my question that you're saying, teacher's last day would be the 31st or the 4th, so.
On the 2022 calendar, our last day of the teachers are expected to report is June 14th. That is an undesignated workday.
Okay.
And then the, the first day that they are expected to report in Draft A is the 17th of August. And the first day they are expected to report in Draft B is the 9th of August.
Okay. And that is not just for year-round? Because I knew, I knew year-round had that, that law.
Ms. Webber, if you would speak to that, please.
Right, so the calendar law requires 42 consecutive days when teachers are not required to report, and it's not specific to year-round schools.
Thank you, Ms. Webber.
Yeah, I know, it's getting late. I, I know we were, I know I insisted on a couple calendars. I know there were three calendars. I feel like we have, did you, I'm sorry, clarification, Ms. Crable, was, was the B one that was out or the A one that was out?
A, 44 days, we're in compliance. B, we're out by four days.
Okay, so I really don't want to be forced to vote on one cal, I mean, I would, I feel since the law states we don't have to get a calendar to the state until April. I'm not saying put it off completely till April, but what I'm, and since graduation dates have already been announced, and either way, in either of these calendars, graduation dates fall beyond the date. I just think that we need to maybe look at all the, the Calendar Committee that I watch, basically, and the way the community feels is that they want to end by December. And I feel only one of these calendars currently meet that, and that's probably why the committee wanted to send this one forward. But there was a third choice that.
Committee did not want to present the board a third choice.
They did not?
No.
Okay, well, I know they wanted.
I asked them to bring all three calendars, and the committee insisted to bring these two.
Right, well, well, I know the desire was last year, and what the desire is this year is that we align the calendars with the community colleges for the door-enroll kids, and that, that is super important. And it's not just because we want to defy law. I think it's because we know that's important. I don't know what the kids are going to do this year, and it worries me, and I don't want us to make that same mistake. So I'm hoping, as far as, I call it a mistake because I feel like the, the community is desperate for the calendars to align with those door-enroll kids, and it's going to be a problem for them, and I don't want that, to do that again. So if we have to send the calendar back, or if we have to have further discussion, maybe look at some more ideas, or maybe even bring that one back, what do we have to do that's going to help the students? I'm in favor of that. I don't know how this board feels about it, but.
Chair recognizes Ms. Barnum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to throw out there, when I was researching this, it makes me very uncomfortable that, one, even though we put 3,300 back in policy, the Calendar Committee submitted a Calendar Draft B that violates our own policy. So if you look at the old policy for 3,300, it indeed violates that. So they presented us an option that went against our own policy first thing. Second thing is there is an exception for a waiver rule. Now, it is highly unlikely that we will get that exception, but it is the pathway in which we can actually obey the law and still get the calendar that the Calendar Committee has selected coming forth. So I would like for this board, in addition to taking this into consideration, I would like for us to come together with a referendum of sorts, that we can go up to Raleigh when the General Assembly comes in session. I've spoken with two of the Education Committee reps there and advocate on behalf of our students, and maybe we can reach out to Brunswick and Pender and get some accommodations so that we can change the law and be in compliance with the law, which is what we swore in our oath that we were going to do here tonight. Because I think our kids and our staff are worth fighting for, and I want to do that through the right channels. So that's my discussion.
Ms. Mason?
I certainly agree with her. Do you want to consider the Calendar Committee meeting again? Before you go, or before we put something together?
I open feedback, and I would gladly represent them because that's who we are representing as elected officials, and I welcome anybody else who wants to come with me.
So you're going to do all the work?
Sure, I'd be glad to.
I'll go with her.
Mr., Ms. Mason, sorry?
I agree with Josie. I, I think that we got resounding votes, people that reached out to us, kids, staff, parents, that really want Plan B. Plan B? Nope. Calendar B, sorry. Wrong word. So I want to accommodate that, but again, we want to make sure that we're following the law. So if we can get a waiver, because we are a town that does suffer, suffer through hurricanes. In the school that I was in, in, in the state that I was in, in New York previously, we had built-in snow days, and we don't have those here. And so, obviously, we don't have those here. We don't have hurricane days either. And so I think that if we can submit a waiver because of the hurricanes that we have had, the natural disasters we have had, that that could be a promising way for us to be able to vote yes for this Calendar B and not be breaking.
When you look at the waiver, because I actually pulled the waiver today, to fill the waiver form out, you have to have in the tenure span, four years where you miss eight days. We only have Florence. So I don't know how we would even complete the waiver. That, that would be a challenge for us because that is part of the application process. We do not have that. I mean, Jason, unless you know something different.
I had heard it was 10 years, but.
It is, it's a 10-year span, and in that 10 years, you have to have four years where eight, you miss eight days in that 10-year span.
Eight days cumulative over 10 years.
No, ma'am. Eight days each for four years each.
So 24 days.
24 days.
Mr. Webber?
In 10 years, for Miss, for Webber.
Webber?
Right, I'd be happy to provide clarification on that. So the, the calendar law does allow for a waiver process, and it gives the State Board of Education the authority to grant a waiver for a good cause. And the statute defines good cause very narrowly to mean, and I'll just read it for you, that schools in any, school district in the county have been closed eight days per year during any four of the last 10 years because of severe weather, energy shortages, power failures, or other emergency situations. My understanding of the process that Dr. Faeson is describing with NCDPI is that they really only approve weather-related waivers. And again, it's eight days for out of the last 10 years.
And I'd like to explore the waiver, the exception. I thought I had read, Mr. Webber, something about an exception, and it did apply to weather. And, you know, we've been overwhelmed with parents and teachers asking to go with B. Not one single person said pick the opposite, even explaining we have to break the calendar law. So I spent some time thinking about, okay, what happens when it's a bad law? Or in this case, it might be flawed for right now in the way that the calendars are running in terms of, you know, what days fall when. And, you know, it takes me back to, you know, the Tea Party in Boston, and it's not that extreme, but we have 24,000 students that are going to be affected by this, so it's a huge decision. And I, I agree with everything that's been said, Ms. Barnhart, you know, and, and Stephanie Walker. We owe it to the kids to get it right, and so if we table this until the January meeting. But, you know, in, in Florida and in Georgia and South Carolina, I cannot believe that they, they're much bigger tourism places in a lot of ways than we are. And I can't believe that, I remember when this law was written, and it sounded good at the time, but now it's causing this problem. So we need to take that to the legislature, legislature and say, hey, can we get an exception? Can we get a waiver for weather? What can we do and work with them before we adopt something that hurts all of our students? That's, this is where I'm, where I am tonight. I'm not ready to vote.
Yeah, the, I just want to make a statement that 24,000 kids are not affected by this calendar. It's really only our 8,900 high school students. And because elementary and middle school students, it doesn't matter when we break because they just continue on. So this policy really is affecting high school students only, and so I just wanted to point that part out as well. And it is in the General Assembly. It is going to be discussed in their long session about student-focused versus economy-focused calendars. And so the, it is best, you know, students do, would like to be out. I like that calendar as well, but am not willing to break the law and to try and write a waiver that is also not really what's happening in our county.
Chair recognizes Ms. Walker.
Thank you very much. So I've done a lot of research on this, especially because of last year, and then all, what, what happened to us when we came up to the school year and people were like, what are our high school kids going to do? And they, and that was very legitimate concern. I agree with Ms. Bradford. This law has been in, on the. the books since two thousand and four, but it does not accommodate the fact that we have a lot of high school students now that are taking dual-enroll classes, so we absolutely have a large number doing that, and we have to keep that in mind, um, also, we know there are other counties that, uh, that aren't defying law, that are still managing to get calendars, Pender being one of them, there are probably about ten that I know of, that, um, that, that's the whole conundrum with the uneven semesters, and that is what they, we are trying to avoid, I talked to my daughter, she used to be a high school student graduating in twenty-seventeen, she said, it was like that when she went there, the uneven semesters, so, they make it work, they, teachers let, let you know, they let you know that, okay, next semester's going to be a little bit longer than this semester, but they adjust for it because they want to, one, accommodate them as far as their, their, um, dual enrollment, but also finishing, um, exams by December, so, if we can send it back, and we can look at more calendars, maybe look at some other examples of what the other districts are doing, and we might come up with something better that won't defy law.
Ms. Bradford?
I don't want to break the law, but all over the state, hundred-plus counties, a portion of them are breaking the law this week, I, I know that for a fact, in terms of talking to school board members, school board chairs, in other counties, and they're putting their kids first, and so we're in this, we're in this conundrum, and I just think that we just need to postpone this till the next meeting, and we need more input, we need more input to be able to make the best decision, I had emails from parents who don't have high school students, begging me to choose B, um, so with all respect to it's only the high school students, I disagree based on the volume of requests I got from parents, begging, please go with B.
Um, the other thing I want to add is, I know I've been openly critical of the board making a decision, and then backtracking on their decision, and so, Dr. Faeson, I want to ask you, um, have we entertained the idea of surveying our families here in New Hanover County, to see if it's an overwhelming majority, or just loud voices in the room?
Um, I actually, and, and Mr. McManus will, will, will echo this, I actually presented that to the calendar committee, to actually put up both of these calendars, even all three of them, because we actually have three calendars, the committee did not want to do that as well, um, the committee wanted to bring you these two calendars, so, we did entertain that, uh, I just want to remind you guys, I am just the facilitator of the process, uh, and I was reminded of that, so I, I facilitate it, and this is what the calendar committee asked me to bring to you, so I will do what, whatever, um, you know, the board would like me to do, but the calendar committee did not want to entertain that, Ms. Barnhart.
Okay, Ms. Bravford, would you take it home, please?
Yes, the, um, I just, the other point that I, I was looking at my notes, I forgot to make, is that, um, again, I like the draft B, but if we intentionally break the law, what message are we sending to our, our teachers, not, to not do what their principals say, and to our principals not to do what Dr. Faust and his senior staff say, and what our board policies say, and therefore, to allow parents to just say to principals, I'm not doing it, I don't like it, it's done, and so, I just want us to think about that too, if we are intentionally setting it up that we are going to break the law, then we are setting up a, the possibility for a culture that says, it's okay to thumb our nose at authority, um, figures in the school unit, so-
At this point, I would entertain a motion, anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we table it until the January meeting, hoping to get more information about the idea of a waiver, maybe having y'all have conversation with, with our state representatives, and see if there's any hope to do this and stay within the law.
And the word we want to use is postpone?
Postpone.
Because table means we're going to talk about it later in the, in the meeting, it's postponed to January.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone till January, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Mason, um, let's see, all in favor, please signify by saying-
You say discussion, or no?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
I just want to point a clarification, I didn't want to amend her, because I think her motion, uh, Ms. Bradford's motion, because, um, I agree, but I also wanted to find out whether we can ask or compel the committee to send us the third calendar as well, just for consideration, or maybe even next calendar committee meeting, they talk about it more, because if it's not in compliance anyway-
They, we, we got that in our board packet.
Well, I know, I know, but I meant bring to us as a board to consider, I don't know that that needs a motion, but maybe just as an ask.
Wait. Yes, Ms. McManus?
Obviously, we still are very supportive of trying our very best to make this happen. Can you talk about taking this and meeting with the legislature, will you include our local reps?
Uh, so I've reached out to two of our reps, um, one in the General Assembly, one in the Senate, about presenting at an education committee, and they welcomed that with open arms, because they want to hear from us, and so, that was one of, when watching the calendar committee meetings, one of the things that I found was, that was, the voice in the room was saying, well, what have we been doing, well, that's a great question, what have we been doing, have we been really advocating for our staff at a state level or a federal level, because if we want things to be changed, to get done, it's going to take us to do it, and I'm not saying that as a negative, I'm saying that with, with gumption to say, let's take charge, to help make change.
What you said, I thank you, because we do not advocate for ourselves here enough, nor do we defend ourselves, we need to advocate, thank you very much.
So, I have done that as well, so it's not a new Josie thing, and we've talked about it at the NCSBA, you know, so it's not new.
This member of the way-
Yes, sorry.
Bradford?
I have reached out to a state representative, and, um, and a House representative, and the House representative said, wow, that, that, that sounds logical, we're here on the coast, there's got to be some exception, um, the state representative said, have you asked staff to think outside the box, and I know you have, um, but that's, that, that was the response, they have been very receptive, those who I've talked to, um, I did reach out to the, to the Speaker of the House, and he has not yet responded to me.
Well, we will, uh, I, I can tell you that the committee has thought of hours, outside of the box, honestly, I, I think we have, we looked at changing the semester for this one, we just could not figure it out, because you do have the laws for teachers and the time, so if you increase the time, one time, if you increase the time, you had your teachers getting out so early, because they have to, well, the students are getting out way early, and the teachers are still contracted to work, we could not figure it out as a calendar committee, um, there were people in the calendar committee who said, we need to take this to Raleigh, we need to do some things, um, so, there were definitely that call, I would do whatever the board's pleasure, there is not a, another calendar committee scheduled, there, the calendar committee developed these calendars, they brought you this calendar, there's not another calendar committee scheduled, I honestly don't think we could schedule another one before we get out for Christmas break, and then I know the board comes back, so I don't know if that's the question, or if we're going to advocate, so, just need some direction of what you want me to do, because I will support you, of course, but I just need to know what the role you want me to play.
Chair recognizes Ms. Walker.
So, I, I, looking back at the calendar committee meetings from the year before, with the calendar that everybody liked, the biggest problem was the uneven semesters, but that has been done in the past, and that has worked, and I, I, it got changed, the calendar committee last year decided that was the calendar that they wanted, and then the fourth meeting got completely given this one, anybody in the board, I, I'm happy to talk to you guys about what I've found, so what I, what I think is, there's a solution out there, whether or not we have to compromise and say, you know, we're not going to have even semesters, which doesn't defy calendar law, then we should do it, because the, the calendar last year was very popular, not this one's, but the one last year, and I think that's what parents liked and want to keep, so, I, if, I don't, if we're not going to have a calendar committee meeting, perhaps our retreat, or, you know, that's before our meeting, we as a board need to talk about it then, maybe.
Order of the day, I'd like to call for order of the day, okay, go ahead, I'll do it after you, that means we have to stop.
So I know that we kept referring, we keep referring to last year's calendar, so, they can make it work, you have to take all of the, um, workdays out, put them at the beginning and at the end, there's no breaks in there, and so, when that happened last year, the month of November, there was an emergency board meeting, and the board decided that you need to do an SCL, a social-emotional day, because the teachers needed a break, they were in the middle of creating a calendar, so when that calendar was made, and the board said this, and then we were also looking at the trainings for the teachers, it was the literacy training, and it was also the, um, uh, it was the ten schools for the, the discipline that we were training, so we did not have any time in there, so, teachers and principals were having to create times in there, so when the board decided they were going to vote on, um, the, the, the suspension, we asked that we be able to train teachers, so when we had to train teachers, we had to put days in the calendar for teachers to be trained, we, then, of course, if you go back, and you look at that emergency board number, the board said, we need breaks, so what we did is went back and put breaks in, so we did exactly what the board said do, everyone forgot about that meeting where it was an emergency meeting, that changed your calendar, and then it was, we made something different, but you have to go back and watch the meeting where it said, because if you remember, it said, call it a snow day, and I said, we can't call it a snow day, because there's no snow.
And an emergency day.
It says, call it, call it a day, and I said, tell me, we have to be able to pay teachers, and we explained that it's, you know, X amount of, um, hundreds of thousands to, for one day, for, for, for teachers, and to run payroll, and so that's what happened to the calendar, but all you have to do is take out all of your, um, days, put the fifteen or however many at the beginning of the year, and put them at the end, and there are no breaks for teachers, and that'll fix your calendar.
Ms. Bravford, did you just, uh-
Yeah, but you know what, I just noticed that the, the, what I was calling for was orders of the day, which means we have to follow the agenda, including time limits, um, no interruption, no debate, no amendment, no vote, um, but I am looking here that we didn't write fifteen minutes on the, on the, the agenda, I wrote that in, so, I will, I will retract that.
Would you like to move the-
I would like to, well, we've already moved, I would like to move that we move on, call the, call the question.
All right, let's move the question.
I would, is there any way I can amend that slightly?
You can.
Again, but she's done that, can I, I can't, can I?
Well, you can amend it.
Whoever?
She can amend her motion.
So as I understand it, there's been a, a motion to postpone-
Right.
-this item until January, there, there's been a second to that motion, and, and now, it, I'm, I'm sorry, isn't there now a, a motion to amend the motion?
She, she's asking if she can.
I'm asking if I can amend it slightly.
You're the one who made the motion.
I know that.
So you can amend it.
Yes, can we direct the staff to find out what, what, what is happening in the other counties in North Carolina?
We do have some research on that, I actually had that, and, um, for the board, there are some counties that are, of course, defying, um, there are counties that are not, the, I think some of our, of our sister calendar, and, and forgive me, I am talking about when I looked at this before, when they're making it work, they're doing something like Ms. Walker said, one group, one group of kids are going to school a month more, so, the calendar committee did not, and you can go back and look at the meeting, that's why they did not bring you Calendar C, because Calendar C has one semester of students getting twenty-one days of instruction more than the other semester, so that is what a few schools are doing, so you have a combination of schools that are doing that, and then you have a combination of schools that are just breaking the law.
But, under, under move the previous question, which is what I just did, must get recognized from the chair, thank you, no debate, no amendment, two-thirds vote.
Right.
So, we can amend when I call for the question.
Let us go ahead and call the vote, so all in favor of the motion, which again is to postpone the discussion, uh, of this until January, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven-zero, we will, we'll talk-
Can I just ask the, um, chair to please, if, if I can know what my role and responsibility, you don't have to tell me now, I just want to make sure that I do what the board expects me to do for January.
We are going to have a, a retreat, and we'll bring you to that discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Carry on, uh-
All right.
Back to you, I believe.
Okay, it is, and, um, so, we, um, back in September, we approved our school improvement plan, but per state law, you have to, the low-performing school improvement plans are tentative, we have to post them for any feedback, and add indicator B-101, which basically says there's a school improvement team that works with these schools, we have done that, so I now am asking the board to approve our school improvement plans for our low-performing schools, I will also be sent, of course, all of the school improvement plans, you can go on the school website, and you can get the password, but I will be sending the board a generic password for you, that you can just log in and see all of the, um, school improvement plans, but now I'm asking you to, for approval of the, um, school improvement plans, please keep in mind that they are a living, breathing document, schools are working in them constantly, because it is dictating, um, the innovation and the things that they're doing, yes, sir?
We got that in the pamph, we got a little handout.
Yes, sir. They didn't, they, they didn't, I couldn't give it to them yet, so I'll send, I've, I've got it ready to send to them tomorrow, it, it's a handout, and you can just get into all the documents, so you don't have to go in and out of schools, it'll let you have access to every school in the county, but right now, I need approval for the plans.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the, um, so, how can we approve if the new board members haven't read them yet?
They've read these ones.
They've read these?
These plans are being approved, not, these plans are being approved that they have B-101, and that they have been posted for feedback.
That's what I thought.
You've already appro, you've already approved the plans, you're approving now that we've done that, we have not received any feedback, and the plans have the B-101, because this is a state timeline.
Okay, then, I make a motion that we approve school improvement plans for low-performing schools.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, discussion?
Yes. Um, can you tell me, I, I, I looked at this on Thursday, um, can you tell me why Holly Shelter Middle only has six action items, and then some of the other schools have as many as thirty?
Because the schools actually have to have a certain amount of indicators, they have to have, um, four indicators, and, um, they can do the action, they build their own plan, so they would do that, I would actually have to, um, look at Holly Shelter and tell you why I think they have that, but it is up to them to determine, you have some principals who say, we're going to do all this, and then you have some principals say, we're going to focus on these areas, and make sure we do them with fidelity, so that's what I would assume, but it is up to them to have, they build these plans.
So what happens next?
They're, they meet the plans, they meet the plans, the, um, school improvement, the sit team, they meet with the plans, this is for parents, and they actually review the indicators, and that's the things that they're saying they're doing, and they actually determine if they are limited, developed, or fully implemented, and then they can add additional indicators, so, it continues to grow.
We have a motion and seconds for any other discussion, if not, all in favor of approving that these plans, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry seven-zero, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And now, I saw Ms. Miles here, uh, we are on to new business, uh, the Head Start non-competing, competing continuation grant, Ms. Miles.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Wilderborn. So this is for, starting May one, for grant year oh-five, for Head Start students, three and four-year-olds, um, two-hundred-and-sixty students to be at Dorothy B. Johnson Pre-K Center, um, two-point-two million, twenty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three will be your PA twenty, which is your training funds, and then, of course, our non-federal match, so, um, grant year oh-five, not new.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to be done. Any questions? I just, I just wanted to make sure that our new board knew why we were doing Head Start, um, so to give a little overview that we are the board of directors for Head Start, I don't, I didn't know if they-
So approval of this grant, approval of this grant would be to, as you guys, as the governing board, to take on the fiscal responsibility and the services for the two-hundred-and-sixty students, three and four-year-old qualifying for the Head Start federal program, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve the, um, item A.
I'll make a motion to approve item A.
I have a second.
We have a second, we do have a second, Ms. Barnhart, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry seven-zero, Ms. Miles.
Thank you, sir. Did we do B?
We didn't do B.
We have two other items that require separate votes?
Yes.
So we have, um, so the next item, um, we have transportation, oh, policy council, so the bylaws for policy council, it's the compos-
So the bylaws for policy council, it's the composition. Um, so po, policy council is within our Head Start Program Performance Standards. So this is the composition of our parents and also our community members. So, um, it's an annual, um, an annual report that the board chair signs along with the policy council chairperson, who is a parent.
So I make a motion that we approve the Head Start Policy Council bylaws for the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Crable. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mason, thank you. All in favor, signify, is there any discussion?
I'm sorry.
If not, all, all, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry seven zero. And Ms. Miles, we're on to section C, please.
So the transportation waiver, um, is, um, it goes along with your submission of your grant that is due February one. And this is just to protect us as a school system if we were to be able to stretch those services for transportation and, and be able to allow our three and four-year-olds placed at Johnson Pre-K Center to ride our, um, K-five buses, our elementary buses. Currently, there's, they're two separate buses. But this provides you a waiver of protection if we're able to do those kind of services for those students. And it, it goes along with the submission of the grant. It's a new requirement to have a new approval of this item on a yearly basis.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Do we hear a motion to approve item C?
I make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Head Start Transportation Request Amendment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Barnhart? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Miles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carry on with section, uh, eleven, excuse me, twenty-one. Um, information, I don't think there's anything under that, so we'll carry on to, uh, committee reports. I did have a brief committee report, uh, met with Legion Stadium Committee twice in the last two months. Um, Mr. Anderson was with me on the first one. They, there is a new group, uh, a soccer group, professional soccer group, that is wanting to, uh, use Legion Stadium, which, uh, on the front, uh, sounds outstanding. Uh, they also want to set up a restaurant, taking up much of the parking at Legion Stadium, uh, and also offer beer at that, uh, site. So there's a lot of, uh, concern from the county commissioners and other members, uh, as well as myself, at Legion Stadium. So that is an ongoing discussion, just wanted to let you know about that. Uh, you know, we're all, we love the idea of soccer, but the, uh, the idea of possibly, um, you know, even at our high school events, having that restaurant, uh, uh, working, they were going to use like containers and, uh, have that out in front. So, uh, more information coming from Legion Stadium Committee, uh, but we just wanted to let everybody know about that. Um, any questions about that? No, no, nope. Uh, correspondence, does, does anyone have any correspondence to share with us? If not, announcements, um, January regular Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, at five P M. at the Board of Education Center. The general public will have an option to view remotely on our N H C S T V YouTube. Uh, additionally, I think the majority of us, in fact, all of us, will be going next week to Core Training in Raleigh, and so that will be, uh, a very, um, wonderful event and we'll all learn a lot, I'm sure. Um, and we also will have a retreat next month. Uh, we, uh, more to follow on that. I do have temporary, um, board assignments. These are, again, just temporary until, uh, we do talk about at, these at the retreat. But right now, uh, I've placed, uh, on E D I, uh, Walt, Ms. Walker, Mr. McManus, and Ms. Mason. Uh, the legislative, Ms. Crable, Ms. Bradford, and Ms. Mason. Policy, myself, Ms. Barnhart, and Ms. Crable. Title IX will continue to be Ms. Crable and Ms. Walker. Uh, curriculum, Ms. Bradford. Calendar, Ms., uh, Mr. McManus and Ms. Walker. Uh, Head Start will be Ms. Barnhart. Gifted, Ms. Bradford. And E C, Ms. Mason. So that was, again, our temporary until.
Will you email us that? Because we didn't even have a chance to.
I will do that. I will, I will email that, absolutely. And I also will be emailing you possible dates for the retreat.
Mr. Chair, you said those, these were temporary till we have the retreat?
Correct.
Until we kind of give our, okay.
Right, that's, yeah, that's, that's, at that point, we'll be able to discuss those at length. Yes, Crable?
Am, am I staying on Shack? There's a couple committees you left off, or should we just not worry about that until?
Well, like Shack, yes, you, you have you on that. It's, it's, these are the ones where we had someone that was on there that we lost.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we have a need for a second closed session, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we do.
So move Ms. Bradford, second.
Second.
Ms. Mason, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I do want to thank everyone for tonight.
Great first meeting. Please email the.
I will. Okay, I will, absolutely. Short.
Oh, I should check that as well. I think I checked as well. Yeah, just no more.
Okay, I'm gonna send that out for you too.
But it didn't sound like it. I am happy to sit down. No, no. And, and, no idea. Yeah. I agree with the one. I got, gave me roses. I got roses.
No.
I know. I know.
So I'm happy to sit down. Because Stephanie added, she went through all the things that I have to do, that I'm supposed to do, that I can do, um, because they're long. And what you have to do before you leave is that, um, that red folder that's on your desk, pull out the sign, because that gets the, and then you're waiting on them. In the next day or two, to sign all these things.
I'm really glad to do that. Oh, you brag. And sometimes, she'll give, she can give them to you tonight. They're also, you know, downstairs. Well, what did it? Somebody gifted me an R B G. Notebook. They, they loved me, I don't know. Oh, scroll down a little. I know. I did my hers, did my make-up. I know. And we, and we got here, four thirty, nine thirty-six, three seventy. I got here. I have my whole. I don't know. Right here. Okay, we'll take that. I haven't seen mine yet. Where's mine? Oh, there it is, okay. Hey, better than COVID hair, man. My COVID is long last time.
Let me just tell you, that I, I, I like, would call, whenever I was on, uh, when I was reporting at John's shop, we, we couldn't get hair done. I mean, my hair was like, I, I mean, it was just so thick and long.
Oh, well, lucky.
And it was, it was, and, and I was just, I mean, I would, I would, I would, I would set up some back door, whatever. But then I would have to explain how I got my hair cut because everything was shut down.
What are you doing? You're going to Harv Johnson, partying down, but everybody's watching.
See, I used to work for Sixberry, we used to have Harv Johnson. I used to come on and battle.
But I'm having a hard time. I want some DC and uh, stories on that. I've noticed that you need to. You do, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing. To the calendar, to the calendar. Your eyes are going too, is that what you're telling us? Just snipe me.
Sign, sign. Alright, bud. One down. Alright, we need these.
I mean, it's what we do, but it's boring. Oh, and it wasn't, it wasn't. Oh, yeah, you got, the board can have, each of the board members can take one. Hey, Pat.
Do you want the box?
Pat, if you want a point set, take it. There's people who want to. I live on my town. You reached the plan, but I didn't like this. I was like, hey, let's take them. Yeah. Sorry. I was like, oh. Yeah. Sorry. I'm 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 sorry.